Please rise and lift the flag.
In allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Drucker, if you can, time to call a roll.
Yes, Dr. Drucker. Mary Adams, absent. Anthony Cornacio.
Here.
John DeGrace.
Present.
Arnold Drucker is present. George Gordon.
Present.
Wanda Jackson.
Present.
Edward Powers.
Present.
Donna Tooman.
Present.
Kathy Weiss.
Present.
Patrick Deegan.
Still here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Trusty Drucker. Do I have a motion to approve the morgue's 10:00, 2015 minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And I can double that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote is nine. Any against? Nine, zero. Motion carries. Let's see. I make a motion under Article Four, Section Three of the Board's Rules of Procedures to allow for the consideration of an item that does not appear on the calendar. Do I have a motion?
Move. Cornacio.
Cornacio, do I have a second?
You're the mover. Cornacio is the second.
I'm the mover. Cornacio's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries nine, zero. Trusty Weiss, would you be so kind?
With the Board's indulgence, I'll go straight to the "be it resolved" paragraph.
Yes.
Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College having determined that the Academic Senate, based upon the work of its Developmental Education Committee, has been provided adequate time to formulate a recommendation to the Board respecting the Board's charge to it to consider the utilization of multiple measures for admission to the college. And indeed, since the Academic Senate will consider its Developmental Education Committee's recommendation at its April 21st, 2015 meeting, and thereupon, disanticipated, will transmit its recommendation to the Board of Trustees for action. The Board herewith extends its appreciation to the Academic Senate, and the Board will promptly review the recommendation of the Academic Senate respecting the utilization of multiple measures for admission to the college at its meeting to be held in May 2015.
Any discussion on this resolution? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries nine, zero. We're going to proceed to the speakers list. Trusty Powers, would you be kind enough to keep the log?
Three minutes.
Three minutes? We'll start with Patricia Halpero. Is there any particular reason we put you so far back in the room?
I can move up.
No, you can't.
No, I can't.
You're attached.
I'm attached. I am not Pat Halpero. I'm Jordan Smith for Students' Personnel Services.
Then I'm going to have to ask you to take a seat. I need Pat Halpero.
I am speaking on behalf of her. She was here until a little while ago. She's injured, and she had to have a ride, and they had to leave, so she asked me to read her statement.
Go ahead.
Is that acceptable?
Sure.
Okay. So I'm going to read in her voice. My name is Patricia Halpero, and I'm here to represent the Sociology, Anthropology, and Social Work Department, and to speak on class size limits. First, I'd like to state that we agree with our colleagues. The Board's role is to oversee the general administration of the college, not to micromanage academic issues and classroom concerns, which are a matter appropriately addressed through the Academic Senate and the NCCFT contract. The issue of class size is one example of why this is important. Class sizes are initially set by the college-wide Curriculum Committee based on pedagogical needs, and if they are to be adjusted, those needs must be taken into account. Let me give you an example. In our Human Services AA program, our HMS 205 internship course has recently been increased by four students, from 12 to 16. Without going into detail about how many ways this course would be negatively influenced by this change, here is one small illustration of why class size matters. In class, students may bring a problem they have encountered in the field placement, and these issues can take time resolving. If a student experiences an ethical dilemma, we want the student to work through with the help of the instructor. One such instance was when a student found two clients having sex in a closet. Since she saw one of them as a predator, there was a significant age difference, she was reluctant to inform her superior, since the perceived victim might be penalized as well. After must-discussion of the pros and cons of one action or another with guidance from myself, the group suggested that the student agreed to tell the supervisor and let her decide what the correct course of action should be. She did so, and the agency terminated all services for the older participant and gave the younger participant a severe warning. With 16 students in a class, how could we possibly address all the students' concerns? Speaking on behalf of my entire department, I hope the Board will direct the administration to roll back its unilateral lateral increase in class size and bring their concerns before the appropriate shared governance bodies. Thank you for your time.
You know, folks, for the rest of this evening, we have 27 speakers. If you cannot stay here to speak, going forward, we don't hand in the resolution. It's not fair to everybody else who's waited to speak to be here. I'm not going to do this 27 times, so no. If Andrew DeJoseph is not here, please hand in his statement. We will read it as a board. Lynn Bergen.
Good evening. As a representative from the Administrative Business Technology Department, I would like to express the department's feelings on the recent resolutions that have been put forth by the Board of Trustees. With all due respect, the Administrative Business Technology Department would like to request that the Board of Trustees let the faculty and staff at NCC complete our responsibilities to the students and the community as we have been. We are specialists, and we are doing what is best interest for the students. There are well-proven procedures in place. Please allow us to follow this process and maintain our reputation as an outstanding community college that works hard for our students and ensures successful outcomes. Thank you.
Richard Del Bango. By the way, if any of you have these statements prepared, please hand them in to the Board, and we will include it in the minutes as your formal statement. All right? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Richard Del Bango. I'm representing the Library Department. We, the members of the Library Department, are seriously concerned about the erosion of shared governance at the college. A partnership embedded in contractual agreement among the Board of Trustees, Nassau County, and the NCCNT. The rights, responsibilities, and duties of the faculty are clearly delineated in the contract regarding matters of governance, including curriculum, promotion and tenure, sabbatical leave, and departmental spending on educational resources. Yet contractual processes that address these matters are being frequently disregarded by the administration and the Board of Trustees. These issues, if not resolved quickly, threaten to impact the quality of education we provide for our students, a quality that has long been the pride of Nassau Community College. We respectfully ask the Board of Trustees to reengage with the faculty in a manner that respects the NCCFT contract and returns the institution to a collegial atmosphere of mutual respect and understanding, with the education and retention of our students as the top priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here as a representative of the Department of Physical Sciences. We are opposed to the recent Board of Trustees' resolutions, as we believe them to be in violation of shared governance in the CBA between the NCCFT and administration. We ask the Board of Trustees to reaffirm our faculty's rights to shared governance and to withdraw the resolutions in question. From this point forward, I am no longer speaking as a member of the Department of Physical Sciences. I'm just speaking in terms of my own experiences.
You're not getting another three minutes.
I understand that. Thank you. This is less than three minutes total. I serve on two separate college-wide committees of the Academic Senate. I chair the Student Enrollment Management Committee, and I am a member of the Assessment Committee. Additionally, I serve on the Retention Committee, as well as two working groups of the Middle States Self-Study Team. To say I know about shared governance, you know, I'm an example of shared governance here on this campus. It's what I do, okay? As part of my work on these committees, I collaborate with numerous members of the administration. I can honestly say that I consider these people true colleagues whose opinions I value. I would like to think that you would say the same thing about me, but you would have to ask them personally to know for sure, okay? We've had many fruitful discussions that have resulted in work that I believe have truly benefited the college. The existence of shared governance and the Academic Senate is what allowed these discussions to occur. To put it simply, shared governance works. Each of us, the faculty, the administration, and the Board of Trustees, has something positive to contribute to the college. We each have an expertise that the other lacks. As per the NCCFT contract, we each have an important role to play in the functioning and success of the college. It is by working together in true collaboration that we can meet and surpass the obstacles that lay before us. I feel that collegiality and collaboration has been lost in recent years. It is time to get that back. Resolutions create a feeling of opposition and divisiveness. No one wins under these conditions. If we end up in a legal battle over these resolutions, we lose no matter who wins. Countless time and money will be wasted that could be better used to better serve our students, which is why we're here after all. At the end of it, all you've made is an enemy out of the people you still have to work with instead of a partner. Partners work together for the benefit of all, not enemies. The structure is already in place to make decisions together to address the issues facing us all, and that structure is shared governance and the Academic Senate. Shared governance made NCC the amazing institution that it is today, and it's through shared governance and true collaboration between the faculty, the administration, and the Board of Trustees that will keep NCC a top institution in the future. I again ask that you repeal the resolutions in question and restore shared governance for the benefit of the college and the students. Now that I have a 6:30 a.m. class tomorrow, I think I might go home so I can get some sleep, so I could be awake for my students tomorrow. Thank you very much.
I represent the Nursing Department here on campus. The Nursing Department is unanimously in support of our practice and belief in shared governance, and we urge the Board of Trustees to continue the active utilization of this mandate going forward. Whether contributing to the educational success and goals of the students, or whether we're contributing to the health and well-being of the members of our local community, we in nursing see tremendous parallels between both of these endeavors. Healthcare standards, for example, are not decided by individuals or by those whose expertise comes from non-health-related fields. Likewise, decisions regarding educational choices and programs for our students would have the best outcomes when collaborated upon by experienced educators. Neither health nor education is viable if functioning in a vacuum, void of consultation and collaboration between the experts. Positive results are really the goal in everything that we do here. When a Nassau Community College graduate nurse, for example, observes a flat line on a patient's cardiac monitor, they know, through their education at Nassau, to call on a team of experts to intervene and provide required tested standards of care in order to maximize the outcome. Historically here at Nassau, decisions have been made through the use of collaboration, AKA shared governance. We've always collaborated in shared ideas between faculty and administration. The result of this is an excellent reputation for our propiums and a positive impact on our community, and it's through the continuation of this sharing that the educators and administration can prevent our reputation from flatlining. Thank you.
Dean Nataro?
Hi, I'm Dean Nataro from Math, Computer Science, and Information Technology, and here's a short statement on shared governance. First, a quote from the standards of the Middle States Association. From standard four, "The Commission on Higher Education expects a climate of shared collegial governance in which all constituencies, such as faculty, administration, staff, students, and governing board members involved in carrying out the institution's mission and goals, participate in the governance function in a manner appropriate to that institution." Now for a short story. A few months ago, an administrator came to our department meeting. A lively discussion ensued about recent resolutions emanating from the Board of Trustees and the possibility of more of them. Towards the end, I asked him the following elementary question. Does the Board of Trustees believe that it has the power and the authority to impose anything it wants? His answer? Yes. That was a one-word answer, simple, straightforward, no equivocation, no weasel words. In my opinion, I think he'll want to answer the same question. If the administrator is right, just say so. If not, just say so, then we'll have a better idea of the field that we're playing on. A last comment.
Bless you.
Yep, hang in there. Recent resolutions by the Board of Trustees, in my opinion, are top-down commands which dictate final results and require the production of data to back them up, whether or not it exists. They also contain threats. This is what Middle States, this is not what Middle States envisions, and it certainly isn't the NCC that I have known for nearly 19 years. So, sir.
Dean, would you like to hand in your statement to the Board so it can be included in the minutes, please?
Can I edit it maybe tomorrow? There's so many cross-outs. I gotta revise it.
You're not the only one that has cross-outs.
We want clean copies, if you can. That's fine. No, you can hand it in tomorrow. That'd be fine. Just get it to Ann Brandy, if you could.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Deludie, professor of philosophy, and I'm representing the views of the Philosophy Department. Recently, the president of SUNY Albany, Dr. Robert Jones, asserted that the most significant financial threat to that institution is declining enrollment. Over the past eight years, he said, "The total annual enrollment of SUNY Albany has decreased by more than 1,000 students." While Dr. Jones lauded SUNY Albany's many initiatives in technology as job generators, he failed to mention that in that same period, SUNY Albany radically slashed its liberal arts offerings. Ignoring these facts, he called for improvement in the perceptions of SUNY Albany's academic excellence and efforts to advance its institutional reputation. What lesson can we draw here at Nassau Community College from SUNY Albany's trajectory? SUNY Albany cut the liberal arts and witted its fortune to the corporate model of higher education, but failed to see that the long-term consequence is reduction in enrollment. Members of the Board do not succumb to a mirage by pairing a college education with the short-term needs of industry. Students are not customers, and faculty do not sell commodities. SUNY Albany's experience demonstrates that higher education is not a handmaiden to industry. NCC's proven success over decades is rooted in our tradition of shared governance, not in board-ordered mandates. Your failure to entrust the formulation of academic policy to professional educators at the faculty threatens the future academic standing of our college. Would you allow an administrator from an insurance board to perform open-heart surgery, or would you seek out a top surgeon? Would you consult with your family physician in matters regarding financial investments, or would you rely on the advice of an investment planner? Your disregard for the role of faculty in formulating academic policy challenges New York State law, the CBA, and the Middle States Standards of Excellence Number Four regarding shared governance, for which we have been lauded in the past. You, the members of the Board of Trustees, are charged with maintaining our well-being. In the long run, if you follow SUNY Albany's path, you will share Dr. Jones's lament, and our most significant threat here at NCC will be declining enrollment and a watering down of the academic excellence that has been a hallmark of Nassau Community College. The students who sit in my philosophy classroom have the same right to academic excellence as their economically privileged peers at four-year institutions. We, the faculty, are professionals dedicated to guaranteeing this right. Do not trample on it. Thank you.
Dr. Deludie, would you like to hand in your statement to the Board? Dr. Deludie, would you like to hand it in?
I'm going to email it to Ann Brandy.
Okay, fine. Jason?
Jason Gorman. I wanted to personally thank all the Board members for their service on this late evening and for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of my department. The Art Department unequivocally supports the faculty as having the primary control over curriculum. This preset finds support in the Academic Senate bylaws, the NCCFT collective bargaining agreement, Article 19, the AAUP Statement on Government of Colleges and Universities, Section Five, applicable New York State educational statutes and regulations, Middle States Standards Four and Ten, SUNY regulations citing the applicable New York State educational statutes and regulations, and the FCC Statement on the Role of Faculty in Shared Governance. This, by the way, a little sidebar, was a statement we read at the recent Academic Senate meeting. We hereby request that the Academic Senate pass a resolution affirmatively stating that the faculty has the primary responsibility for curricular matters and opposes any Board of Trustees' resolutions that eliminate in whole or part, reduce, or circumnavigate faculty control over curriculum. We also request that the Academic Senate pass a resolution to call on the NCCNT and the administration to each act in their own varying capacities, both individually and in unison, to protect these faculty prerogatives. Thank you very much.
Bruce, are you going to email that to Ann Brandy tomorrow, or are you going to hand it in?
Both.
Yeah, by the way, if any of you who have handed in these, your prepared statements, if you want to email them in clear format to Ann Brandy, you're more than welcome, okay?
Hi, good evening. The Department of LINK would like to express our concern regarding the Board of Trustees' recent attempts to redefine our system of shared governance in a manner that's inconsistent with our collective bargaining agreement, Middle States Standards, and State Education Law. We are highly trained professional educators and academics who know best how to formulate a curriculum that will serve the needs of its students and maintain a high academic standard our students and the community have come to expect from an NCC education. LINK is an academic ESL program serving immigrants and international students from over 40 countries. We are uniquely trained to deal with this population, incorporating all language skills in our lessons on a daily basis. The preparation they get from us allows a previously underserved population achieve college success. We respectfully request that the Board of Trustees allows us to continue to use our expertise in the best interest of our students. Thank you.
Good evening. I represent the Marketing, Retail, and Fashion Department, and I just, I don't know the members, the current members on the Board. I just want to give you a quick background of me, so you know where I'm coming from. I've been an academic senator for over 25 years. I've served two terms as First Vice Chair on the Executive Committee. I served two terms as Chair of the Committee. I also was co-chair of one of our Middle States Committees that helped prepare this school for a visit and review by the Middle States Committee of Our Standards of Excellence. This college has always had, for many years, a very positive national reputation for developing a model shared governance system. Because of this positive reputation and the position I held on the Senate, I was invited to talk and conduct workshops at, okay, the annual AAUP, the Annual Conference of the American Association of University Professors in Washington, D.C., the Annual Conference of Community Colleges in Nevada, and down in Philadelphia by Middle States to conduct a workshop there for the colleges preparing for the Middle States' visit on shared governance. I'd like to think that I've had a fair amount of experience discussing shared governance with many faculty members, administrators throughout the country. I have learned that it is essential, it is important, in a shared governance system that the Board of Trustees, the administration, the faculty, the students, the staffs, we must all work together to achieve our common goals. I implore this Board of Trustees, in your leadership role, to foster and encourage an environment where all constituencies here at Nassau Community College respect each other, trust each other, and are willing to utilize the experience and knowledge of each other to achieve our common goals. Please lead us. Help us. Thank you.
Bruce, I'll email to you. I figured yours were handwritten. I could see from here. Bruce, our quiet.
I'm Chair of the Department of English and also Chair of the Developmental Education Committee, and I hope that this Board will honor the fact that I've been given an additional three minutes by Jim Hoyt of the NCCNT.
Jim Hoyt, is that correct? Add three minutes, there's time.
Thank you.
No problem.
First, let me underscore that there are good administrators and trustees, as well as bad, and I must constantly remind myself of that truth. For those trustees and administrators that have encouraged or even coerced the administration to meddle recklessly and irresponsibly in the shared governance process, I consider your behavior destructive to the centrality of the academic role placed upon experts within the structure of well-framed Academic Senate Committees to create collaboratively academic policies born of informed decisions, ones to promote persistence and retention, and indeed, protect the well-being of our students as learners. The divisive fracturing of the Academic Senate accomplished by board-framed resolutions underwritten by members of the administration, ones that bypassed the Academic Senate as they were directives in translation or else mandates, sent to the Developmental Education Committee and the College-wide Curriculum Committee, is the most obvious insidious manifestation, one that destroys the board, administration, faculty balance, crucial so that academic decisions do not promote a skewed agenda, one, for example, that advances the balancing of a budget over the academic health of students. Our reinforcing molestation is the Board's insertion of a shadow Developmental Education Committee, a Frankenstein creation made up of members of the administration, whose goal was to address the same resolution on multiple measures. Not so parenthetically, Shelley's monster had a few redeeming qualities, a notable difference. Visualize how members of the Developmental Education Committee, once he concluded his work in late March, felt when they read the administrative committee's final report that outlined its recommendations on multiple measures to the Board. I and my colleagues were stunned. Busy work for us, activities to keep us occupied. I did, in early childhood, enjoy playing in that Dick and Jane sandbox, yet, of course, not capable in envisioning then that playtime in the sandbox we continued through my late adulthood. You placed us in our specially constructed sandbox, G243, gave us pails, shovels, colored pens, paper, construction materials, and said, "Now, boys and girls, play nicely. No fighting. Big daddy and mama want you to be creative and build together something special, something useful. Make us proud." And when we finished, it came to you with an idealism born of joy and enthusiasm. Look, look what we have made for you. See, see what we did. Please look now. You patted us on the heads and said, "Soon you will be adults and learn how to play in the real world." How many crushed myths, child and adult, does it take to break our spirit and humanness, to dampen our joy and our communion with others? to dampen our joy and our communion with others as we bond in concert to help those in need? I've been a professor at Nassau Community College for forty-five years, the Chair of the English Department for twenty-eight years, and Chair of the Academic Senate's Developmental Education Committee for ten years, most proud of what this college has accomplished. The exception, the Dark Ages will last five years. In the 1970s, the college served the privileged, the wealthy, and the feeder schools from high-performing districts. It certainly was not reflective of Nassau County as a more global community. In spite of the good news, that is, that the student population is more diverse, today there is another skewing. Many of our students are poorer, are contrastively from low-performing high schools, are challenged, are at high risk for a multitude of reasons, and are seriously skills deficient. Balancing a budget by increasing class size, by removing science and math requirements, and by administering, as dictatorship, through bypassing the shared governance process, disenfranchises the students most at risk, the ones that need a nurturing academic environment as well as support services in order to persist and retain. Moreover, easier, if in your translation means a diluted curriculum and pathways to avoid needed developmental work, encourages failure before and after graduation, indeed a failure to thrive. The college ends up cashing the students' checks and taking their financial aid, thus balancing its budget. Inversely, the retention persistent rates, transfer and workplace success rates exponentially decline. To conclude, civil discourse and cogent, data-driven recommendations framed within the embrace of a shared governance process, alas, appear to be bootless exercises, quixotic dreams. And thus, I must ask the question, albeit rhetorical, what will you listen to?
I'm Mary Artis from the Department of Reading and Basic Education. The Department of Reading and Basic Education unanimously supports the NCCFT collective bargaining agreement. We believe it provides the foundation of the efforts of our department and all the college's full-time faculty, and our collaboration with all areas of the college in fulfilling the NCC mission. This collaboration is grounded in the shared governance process, which has long been the practice and policy of the college. In fact, the shared governance process in conjunction with our contract provides the framework and guidelines for all our work on behalf of our students and the entire NCC community. Section nineteen of our collective bargaining agreement states, "It is the Academic Senate that shall provide the college community with voice in general education goals and policies." This section details the process specifically, noting that the Senate shall have responsibility and powers to formulate and propose policies in those aspects of the student's life which relate to the education process. We believe that this process has been undermined by the recent actions of the NCC Board of Trustees in proposing and passing resolutions regarding academic policies which are, in fact, in the purview of the faculty in collaboration with the administration of the college. As faculty members, we uphold our right and responsibility to bring our collective experiences, insights, and expertise to our work with NCC students, each other, and the college administration. We will do our utmost to defend our rights and responsibilities. As delineated in our contract, we urge the Board of Trustees to respect and honor our contract and the shared governance process as well. Thank you.
Chadwick? DeGore?
Vote.
Okay. Juliana Digextra?
I actually do have a question. I was wondering if we were originally gonna bundle our time, but I wasn't sure if I made it onto the list.
Who is it?
My name's Candace Lopez.
Are you the president of the SGA?
Yes.
I identified you on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is it Candace Lopez?
Yes.
Okay. Now, who wants to bundle what?
Um, no, dude, we're just gonna go separate.
You're gonna go separate?
Yes.
Okay. So, is this Juliana?
Yes.
Okay, Juliana, mic is yours.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Juliana Digstra. Currently, I'm a full-time student, a freshman senator for the Student Government Association, a member of the Honors Club, and next Wednesday and Thursday I'll be running as a candidate in the campus-wide Student Government Association elections, seeking to hold the next presidential position. I would like to speak to you briefly from a student's perspective in regard to class sizes here at NASA Community College. Coincidentally, the small class sizes here at NASA were an additional incentive when I considered attending this institution of higher education. The small class sizes give students a chance to connect with their professors and really grasp the material. They also allow us to have a, sorry, to have a comfortable environment to learn in. Over the past two semesters, I've developed a love for Nassau Community College and everything this institution has to offer. An increase in class sizes would not only negatively affect my personal experience, but also have an adverse effect on the learning environment of the student body as a whole. As a student senators and voting members of the Academic Senate, and also from the perspectives of the students who have sat on several BOT meetings, the Student Government Association would like for there to be more communication and collaboration from both the Senate and the BOT. And all efforts in sharing shared governance will not go without recognition and appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, good evening, and thank you all for coming out tonight. We do appreciate the time you dedicate to the college and its students. I want to make absolutely clear before I say anything that tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the History Department, not the Academic Senate, so please make sure, I don't want to cause any confusion. I'm not speaking for the Senate tonight, I'm speaking for my department, the Department of History, Political Science, and Geography. I just want to make sure that everybody gets that. So, the History Departments would like to call your attention to the recent increase in class size mandated by the college administration. We, that is, the History Department, believe that this increase and the way it was carried through violates Section nineteen of the NCCFT contract, which gives the Academic Senate the power, and here I'm quoting our contract, "to formulate and propose academic policies, including policies on class size," close quote. Now, we recognize, that is, the History Department recognizes, that there are many factors at play determining class sizes. Licensing and accreditation, for example, when you're taught in areas such as allied health and nursing, and also pedagogical or workload considerations. The Senate, the Academic Senate, and its committees are the forum for discussing and making decisions on class size, and the Senate is the body which establishes the procedures for making such determinations. And class sizes may only be changed by the procedures established by the Senate. So, to conclude, the History, Political Science, and Geography Department urges you to instruct the college administration to adhere to the NCCFT contract and the Academic Senate bylaws and rescind the increase in class sizes. So, thank you very much, and is this clean enough?
Chris?
Did you call me, I couldn't hear you? Hi, I'm not here to speak, I'm just here to donate my time to anyone that might need it.
All right, give me thirty seconds.
Tom Roder?
Chris, can I have some of your time?
Please.
And I can say my whole thing.
What do you think, in thirty seconds?
Probably, give me a minute. But at first I have to see if Dean Bennett Murray's here, I need her signature. I've been looking for her a little bit.
Give the spare four minutes on the clock.
Okay, I agree with everything it said, but while I agree with everything it said, I'm gonna argue on a different basis, and by doing so, I'm gonna plead with you to rescind your resolution concerning the math and science and physics requirements. While I heard that you saw my report about the community colleges but decided not to accept it as a Senate report, I do understand that's your prerogative. However, after reading the administrative response, I want to inform you that my data was backed up and further verified through phone calls to the colleges themselves. In addition, I had no less than a dozen people look at it and verify the data I listed. I worked long and hard on that report, and I invite you to look at it over again. When I looked at the administrative response, I saw sentences like, "Although a thorough cross-checking of data has yet to be completed," and "Consider the hypothetical," and of course, there were no references, no appendix, no printouts, all of which I had. So, according to another administrative report, where we stand by the numbers, I read that twenty-one percent of our students transfer to SUNY, thirty-eight to CUNY, if you keep in track, it's almost sixty percent, four percent to HOSTRA, four percent to Adelphi, three to LIU, two percent to NYIT, one percent to St. John, and less than one percent to the all-the-other local colleges. So, I want to look at the CUNY's general education degree. The core curriculum for all CUNY's require one math and one lab science. Then there's another one, so they have it in three sections, the Flex Core, and that includes a class called Scientific World. And then, there's a college option that allows each individual college to pick four subjects. Queen's College, a popular destination for NCC students, actually requires a third science class, another lab science. Yet, on page three of the administrative response, it says that Queen College only requires one math and one science. Let's go to two popular SUNY's, Farmingdale and Stony Brook. Page three of the administrative report states that Farmingdale requires only one math and one science, and Stony Brook was listed as not updated. It didn't take much effort to find a 2013 to 2015 transfer guide listed in Stony Brook Gen Ed requirements, on page five, by the way, that states basic math, statistical reasoning, that's two math classes, and two courses in natural science. For Farmingdale, their Gen Ed requires two courses in math and two courses in laboratory science. Let's move to LIU, CW Post. Page three of the administrative report states one math and one science. So, it is one math, I don't know what the level was, but it's one laboratory sequence requiring two classes in one discipline. LIU Brooklyn requires not one, not two, but three science classes. Go Brooklyn! On the administrative table, it says Adelphi, one math, one science, and a choice of math or science. Not even close. Adelphi has two courses in math and two in science. Again, the facts are not straight. NYIT is listed as having one science course on the administrative report. However, the 2010 Discovery Corps requires two science. I will give the administration credit, though, I think HOSTRA was right. I do have data for all the colleges, they're all printed out here, and it contradicts almost everything the administrative report says, which I would gladly share with anyone interested. Can I submit it to the minutes?
Absolutely.
Okay, so let me ask you this, is the administrative report factual? Therefore, is the BOT resolution factual, where it says most area colleges and four-year SUNY colleges do not require two courses of math, two courses of science to graduate with the general liberal arts degree? Please, for the sake of facts, academic integrity, and shared governance, repeal your resolution. Thank you very much.
No one would object to do it, well, hand. What we said is the process requires something from the Academic Senate. Get it to those people over there who you deal with, you work with, have it put into their report, and we'll accept that as something. We can't get documents from everybody because, that we don't have, it's not within the process, all right? We're trying to develop a good record, and we will, we will pay attention to the honest labors of the Academic Senate, that's what we're saying. So, whatever you have to say, give it to them, let them put it in a response to us and the administration, and we'll deal with it.
Hi, Frank President, Vice President, NCCFT. While your resolution on developmental ed sounds good, how you arrived at it is problematic. I think the fact that it took the board over four hours of executive session discussions to arrive at it is interesting. As you can see tonight, representatives from just about every department are concerned about the recent actions of the board interfering with shared governance on this campus. Hopefully, the board understands the gravity of these sentiments. In addition, you have heard faculty and students express their concerns with the administration's unilateral increase in class size, which is a violation of Senate policy and the CBA. This new paradigm of Board of Trustees' interference with shared governance administrations, violation of Senate policy, and administrations' interference with our own P&amp;T process, that's promotion and tenure process, is resulting in a host of grievances which never had to be filed before. Then, to top it off, faculty who have worked their entire careers and submitted their promotion and their promotion applications to associate and full professor, these applications have been vetted by the Promotion and Tenure Committee, they have been sent to the administration, and for some reason have not shown up on your agenda tonight, and so these faculty, for whatever reason, are still left waiting to see what your decision is on this issue. And that concerns us, that's a real kick in the teeth. So, have a good night.
No slight was meant, we have other urgent business that just did not give us time to deal with that. It will be dealt with at a subsequent meeting, though.
Harvey, I'm sorry, Harry Maroncy?
Harry's not here, but he left a statement.
That's good, but unfortunately, we're not taking it. David Stern? You can hand it into the board, we'll submit it. We'll take the statement into the minutes, absolutely.
I'm actually on the list for, as a reader, so can I still read his statement?
When I call you, you have three minutes, and you can read whatever you wish.
Okay.
No problem, this one. David?
Okay, I want to first thank every board member for devoting the time from your busy schedule to serve on our institution. I also want to give special thanks to Members Drucker and Jackson for your devotion to the presidential search. You made that, you made sure that at least one board member was present at each of the forums, and that's greatly appreciated. I'm sure you'll join me equally in thanking the students here and the faculty that are also volunteering their time to serve the college tonight. Tonight, I'm speaking as a leader of the Academic Senate. We ask that you restore the collegial cooperation on our campus. Such cooperation is not a nice idea, but is required as part of a Middle States accreditation, is also an integral part of state laws governing community colleges, and the college's contract with its faculty and staff. As you're aware, at NCC, we have an Academic Senate, not a faculty Senate. Our Senate includes students and administrators, as well as faculty. For decades, the Senate has provided a forum for faculty, administrators, and students to work together to evaluate issues, especially academic issues, and find solutions that best fit our unique institution. The yearly rhythm of this process started with new charges to over our, our over twenty-five committees at the beginning of the academic year in September, vigorous analyses, discussions, debate throughout the year, and ending with actions through Senate resolutions and reports in May. Remember that, students and administrators participate throughout this process. To ensure the efficiency of this process, the Senate's Executive Committee and the college president and his executive would meet sometimes even weekly. During these meetings, effective strategies would be developed to address the most pressing issues in a timely fashion. While there often were disagreements, there was a mutual desire to reach compromise. This long-established shared governance process at NCC has now been challenged by an unprecedented process that replaces open discussions with dueling reports. One report from the vetted discussions as part of the Academic Senate process, charges, and one, reports from and one reports from administration. Case in point, the most recent administration report on development education is written by unnamed participants who may or may not have been part of the committee, the senate committee. They form their own opinions outside the collective, never advance them to the committee, but instead advance them directly to you. This process is a gross misuse of administrative authority and lacks integrity. It belittles all parties involved, and frankly, puts you, our trustees, in an awkward position, trying to manage fractious groups who are wasting basically resources. Now, when the senate executive committee meets with the president, very little, if any, business takes place. In fact, we have not received one piece of correspondence from the administration regarding direction on how we should address the concerns of the board. To make matters worse, we only learn about these administrative reports after they've been already submitted to the board. More times than not, we've received the reports after they've been submitted to the board, and after you've discussed it and voted on it. We don't understand why this has to be a surprise. We also don't understand why the administration refuses to work with us collaboratively.
David, you're almost done.
On behalf, thank you, on behalf of the faculty, the students, and yes, administrators that are on the academic senate, I ask that you restore shared governance on our campus.
Good evening. First, I'd like to read a statement on behalf of the Communications Department with respect to class size.
Anissa, I'm going to give you three minutes now.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Whatever you want to read.
Very brief. "The full-time faculty from the Department of Communications wishes to respectfully support the authority of the academic senate and its critical role in the implementation of shared governance." Now, I'm reading the statement from the Music Department. "We, the full-time faculty of the Music Department, recognize the necessity for each division of the college, the faculty, the administration, and the Board of Trustees to fulfill its responsibilities in order for the college to function properly. These responsibilities must be carried out in full cooperation with one another for shared governance to be present and truly effective. We also recognize that there will be disagreements among the parties as to the true meaning of shared governance, particularly when faced with tough issues such as those that the college has had to contend with in recent years. Recent actions and statements by all groups involved have caused contention and resulted in a confrontational stance that benefits no one, least of whom the students, who are and must remain our first priority. Therefore, the faculty of the Music Department respectfully request that all parties begin today to work in a collaborative fashion for the sake of the future of Nassau Community College. In order to accomplish this, we must return to the model that worked effectively for so much of the five-plus decades of the college's existence, a governance process that is consistent with the history, culture, and contractual bylaws of our collective bargaining agreement, one that recognizes our faculty as professional educators who have the expertise and experience to oversee academic design and issues within the larger running of the college. We request a return to civility and respect for one another and respect for the established governance process on our campus. Thank you for your time."
Marilyn Godkin?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dr. Marilyn Godkin from the Biology Department. I've been teaching at Nassau Community College since 1985 as an adjunct, and since 1993 as a full-time professor. I'm currently a full professor. I'm not going to speak tonight about shared governance, although I agree with everything that's been said, especially Dr. Ergat and Dr. DeLudi, so whatever they say, add a dito for me. I have some issues that I have observed through the years, and I want to speak to In a democratic republic, it's absolutely necessary that we have an educated electorate. The people who elect our officers of the country, the people who make the decisions regarding what goes on in the world are going to be voting citizens, and voting citizens must be educated. In order to be an educated person, you must study arts, you must study sciences. You can't have one without the other. These are important things that our students must have. Limiting any of this is not a good education for our students. We're always very concerned about graduation rates, of all things. I am a Nassau Community College dropout. How could that be? I took two courses at Nassau Community between my bachelor's and my master's degree. I was required to take 16 credits. I took two courses in the math department, and I took two courses in physics. But because I did not graduate with a degree, I am listed as a dropout, I am listed as a failure instead of success story. And that's a problem, because we rate education by graduation rates, that's the wrong way to do it. And since it's done from the outside world, it's up to us, the faculty, the administrators, the Board of Trustees, to help to develop an understanding that graduation rates is not the only way to judge a college. Our school serves our community in many, many ways, we have a very big mission. I'd like to speak about retention. Our enrollment is extremely heterogeneous. We have students from all economic backgrounds, all educational backgrounds, all social backgrounds. They have great opportunity here to be the best they can be, and we can do it for them, because we, in small classes, can address their strengths and weaknesses. If you ever came into a classroom, you would see that there are students who cannot write, they cannot read, they cannot compute, and as a teacher, you can walk around in a relatively small classroom and help them develop so they can be the best they can be. Our students don't know what studying means, many of us, many of them, don't know what the word "study" means. They don't realize if they're doing homework, they're studying. They don't realize anything about time management. Some of them are working 30, 40 hours a week, I respect that, they need to, many of them. But they're taking 15, 16, and 17 credits just because the college catalog says they can. There is no good advisement for these students. We have a wonderful advisement center, we have very busy advisors, but we have self-serve advisement, where the students advise themselves, and they make a lot of mistakes. A person, an advisor, can say to a student, "Do you have children at home? Do you have other responsibilities? Do you work on the outside? What are your future goals? This is a good course, you can take this course, but a course that would be more useful to your goals is in a different place in the catalog," which they don't read. Why don't... How many minutes? Am I done?
You're done.
Okay. I'm done?
Go to the conclusion.
I can give you a minute, I might... I've got a minute? Can I have one of you a minute?
No.
Okay, so where do I go? All right.
To the end.
I'm going to the end. The end. The most important thing I think we need to think about is class size and printing a college catalog. Printing a college catalog will save us more money in the end, because students will not drop out, because they'll understand what's out there. That's it, I will end.
Kathy Fagan?
I respectfully ask Chris Merlow for two of his minutes.
He only has one left.
One of his minutes?
You can have it.
Thank you.
Four minutes.
I am Dr. Kathy Fagan, Associate Professor in the English Department, Member of the Developmental Education Committee, Chair of the Placement Committee of the English Department, Placement Coordinator for Composition, and Architect of English 100, a course that embeds developmental work within a credit-bearing course that has earned high praise from our students, who have said, "I finally know how to write," and I quote, "I never had 50 minutes in front of a computer to write and with a teacher to help me." Our pass rate with transferable grades of C or better was 91% for Fall 14, reaching 507 students in 29 sections. In Fall 15, we will offer 51 sections of this course, reaching over 1,000 students. One thing, I am not a politician. Most teachers are bad politicians, we have never learned the art of sacrificing quality for expediency. Therefore, when the Developmental Education Committee was given an ultimatum in November by this board, "Review the exemption policies for English, Math, and Reading and Present Your Findings by March 31st, or we will take further action," we got to work. Even though we knew that the NCC board already had the recommendations they wanted clearly in mind, causing one trustee to quit, "It's not rocket science, they can do that in a month," we did what was asked. Led by our chair, the committee formulated a data-supported, exquisitely-vetted series of recommendations for placement test exemption, to which the administrator on our committees, the administration on our committee agreed. Imagine our shock and disillusion when those recommendations were subverted by a set of egregiously low exemption benchmarks, supported by a committee of NCC administrators, unnamed, who asked the advice of select superintendents of high schools of Nassau County. That was an interesting approach to the data-driven recommendations we were instructed to present. Asked the high school superintendents to tell the college what they deemed to be competency among the students they want us to accept into credit-bearing courses. Do doctors ask patients' families what prognosis to give? Do lawyers ask their clients' friends how to create a defense? Do accountants ask the individuals they represent how to go about creating the best tax shelters? Yet, everyone knows how to place students into college courses, everyone except the faculty who teach those courses. The Composition Program that we have built in the English Department launches our students into discourse that is very often their first experience with words beyond texting, tweeting, and writing from templates. And it does so from the first moment that students begin learning with us in developmental and credit-bearing courses. Correctly placing students into that Composition Program is crucial, not only for our developmental students who are otherwise doomed to failure in courses they cannot handle, but also for our non-developmental students whose classes will be stunted by more and more students, unprepared and underprepared, being placed into courses with larger and larger caps. I applaud you for observing that the Developmental Education Exemption Resolution must go through the SEC Academic Senate, according to our mutually established processes. Now, I hope that this body, through the administration of our college, will discuss the provisions of that resolution on the senate floor, working to understand the basis of an honestly-formed set of exemption benchmarks that we can use to help our incoming students. Thank you.
Good evening, Kathleen Gallagher. I'm a faculty member in the Engineering, Physics, and Technology Department. I'm speaking for myself this evening. I fully support procedures and processes in place in the academic senate. I view the senate as a collaboration, a partnership, between faculty, administration, other college personnel, and students in making key decisions here at the college. I trust in the process, my teammates are great, and I hope you do too. Thank you. Am I the last speaker?
No.
Somebody was added after me?
Yes.
Good evening. I was originally told that I would be the last speaker, and I was hoping to be able to say we're all exhausted and good night. I think, at this point, there's very limited things that I need to say, I don't have anything written down. You can see by the amount of individuals that are in this room that there's issues here, there's concerns here. You're hearing that the senate executive committee goes in, and they speak to the administration, and they come out without answers. The same thing happens to the NCCFT. We meet on a monthly basis with the administration. I basically beg them to bring the correct information to the BOT, because I'm seeing a disconnect. We have never had these resolutions that are being brought forward, not that they're necessarily a bad thing, but the language that's within them, and the committees are already moving forward with them, there's just information that's not coming to you in the correct manner. I offered to speak directly to you, I've asked who in the administration speaks to you to get the information to you, so that you have a clear understanding of what happened on the committee levels, and we're basically not getting a response to those questions. So I hope what you're seeing tonight is that, I know you get tired of seeing me up here month after month, you've had so many people come up from almost every department on campus here expressing concern, we feel that we know what we're doing, and that doesn't mean that there's not room for improvement, we want to work with you. I've stressed this, I've said to Ken, we need to move forward, we need to figure out a way to work together again. But with these grievances, I mean, today, the amount of grievances, departments calling us up, "File agreements on this, file agreements on that, file agreements on this." I mean, we're sitting there and we're looking at all these different things, and I'm saying, this is not what I think we should be doing, we should be working together. So I just ask you, when you're driving home tonight, I know you're exhausted, but maybe reflect on what went on here and realize that there's concerns on the part of the faculty, my colleagues, and the students that are here represent what issues we have on campus, and please just give them some thought. I make myself available to you, I represent the 700 full-time faculty, and I would be more than happy to speak to you either individually or as a group, so that you can get information from us, so that I can provide you with what goes on in the committee and also at the NCCFT office. I thank you very much for your time.
Hi, guys. So, my name's Candace Lopez, I'm the President of the Student Government Association here at Nassau, and I know everyone's exhausted, and we've been here for hours, but I guess I'm the one that gets to say that we're almost done. So in addition to the remarks previously made by the faculty and Juliana, one of our freshman senators, I would also like to add that the procedures and policies that have been proposed regarding an increase in class size have not been in compliance with the ideals of shared governance. I know that much of what this institution is dependent on is due to funding, and that tends to be unfortunate. However, as a student who's lobbied endlessly with Chuck Cottolo to increase our FTE funding, it's difficult to believe that because of an increase in class size, without properly adhering to procedures, which are clearly depicted in the CBA and the Middle States guidelines, that Nassau Community College has the potential to lose its prerogatives in providing and maintaining the integrity of an institution of higher education. I suppose I can sum this up by stating that, while sitting here, I've counted nine students, over 80 faculty have come in and stayed and waited for hours on end just to speak with you, and I've never seen a member of the Board of Trustees attend the academic senate meetings as a visitor, except for Patrick. And this is not an example of collaboration from you, but it is from the students. And I'm graduating this spring, so I suppose that maybe I'm just asking that for future SGAs, and for future faculty, and for the future student rep that sits on your board, take that into consideration. And with that said, have a good night, guys.
The next Finance and Capital Committee meeting is scheduled...
I just wanted to let you know, the next senate meeting is next Tuesday, May 12, 2015, followed by the full board meeting. The board will open public session approximately 6:50, 7:30, and resume public session approximately 7:30. I request a motion during the meeting, do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Eddie against? Motion carries, meeting closed.